This conference will now be recorded.
Thanks, Lindsay. So I'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance. Nobody's absent with regrets because Wade will join us quickly or as soon as he can. Any declarations of conflict? Understanding you can call that when the item comes up. Approval of agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions, folks?
I have one, your worship. Ball Field on Southeast Street.
Okay.
Upper end of Southeast Street, actually.
Okay, I'll put Ball Field under 10A. Any other additions?
Traveler's Field.
Philip, the one east of Pleasant on the left.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else? Any additions?
I'd like to talk about the airport, your worship.
Okay, I asked funny. I had that in camera. Do we need to?
I'd like to talk about it in public for a minute or two and then we can.
So that'll be 10B Airport. Anything else? Anyone?
I'll move the approval of the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion or anything to be? We good? Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, presentation. So we have one presentation today. It's the National Housing Strategy, CMHC. Do we have CMHC on the line?
Hi, Jill.
You do. Jill Snow here.
Oh, there you are. Sorry. Hi, Jill.
You have to find me. Hello.
Welcome. And yeah, Wade just joined us. So we're just going to leave it to you. And at the end of your presentation, if the council or anyone else wants to ask questions, we'll go from there. So good to go.
Wonderful. I'm going to share my screen here now. Did I understand correctly? I have about 10 minutes. Is that the time line? Okay, perfect. All right, let me just pull this up. And here we go. All right. So thank you so much for inviting me here today. I'm Jill Snow. I'm the Outreach Specialist to Canada, and I'm actually based out of St. John's Newfoundland. I've recently taken on this role. I'm not sure. You may have met with some of my predecessors. Arlene Etchen, I believe, was involved in setting this up in Abin. So I'm going to chat really briefly about the National Housing Strategy. The material in the strategy would take much longer than 10 to go over. So I'm going to be very high level today. I'm happy to take any questions afterwards. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm getting a little bit of feedback, but if it becomes an issue, you just.
Yes. I can hear you fine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I'm going to be very high level on purpose and light of the time. What I would love to accomplish afterwards is I think there's an opportunity to sit down and for me to get a better sense of what you're trying to accomplish within the town of Yarmouth around affordable housing. What projects might be started or thinking about being started? What stakeholders might be involved or maybe want to entice people to be involved? So I appreciate, and maybe Lindsay and I can chat about this afterward, who would be the best person for me to sit down and maybe we can have a more in-depth conversation. But for today, I'll, like I said, talk about the overview of the strategy itself. And then I'll just touch very briefly on some programming. So the strategy itself was a $55 billion strategy that was launched a couple of years ago based on a number of consultations. And the reason we had come up with the first ever National Housing Strategy for Canada, the importance behind it is there's 1.7 million communities, as you're aware, that are living in a home that doesn't meet their needs. So the vision behind the strategy is that it's an inclusive housing. It includes vulnerable pot people. It includes more livable neighborhoods, more secure places to live, and more access to transit amenities. The idea behind it is that it's a place where creating housing where people can thrive. One of the fundamental bases of the strategy is that housing rights are human rights. And you might have heard in the media that there's been legislation implemented around making housing a human right. And that's been put in place as of last year. We're also looking at appointing a federal housing advocate who's going to ensure that the solutions to systemic barriers to access to affordable housing. And some other initiatives around human rights would be a National Housing Council, community-based tenant initiative, which I believe is already underway, and some public engagement around housing and affordability and reducing stigma around that term affordability and certainly reducing discrimination as well. The main principles behind the strategy are people, communities, and partnerships. And I'd like to point out a couple of things on this slide. Under people, again, I'll define this a little more clearly, but the investments are prioritized to those that are the most vulnerable. Under communities, we're really driving the government of Canada's agenda around climate change. So you'll see elements within the programming related to energy efficiency. And the partnerships is that we cannot do this alone. It takes federal, provincial, and municipal governments to come together along with other partners in the community. So that's the basis behind the strategy. There's some pretty aggressive goals associated with the strategies. And here, I'm not going to go through all of them, but just to point out a couple, we're going to reduce chronic homelessness across the country in the next 10 years by 50%. We're going to build 100,000 new units, and we're going to repair 300,000 new units across Canada. So just to give you a sense, in the last 10 years previous to the strategy, if we repair 300,000 homes in the next 10 years, we're repairing three times what was repaired under the previous years before the strategy. And we're building four times the amount of housing units than what was done in the previous strategy if we built 100,000 new units. The $50 billion sounds like a big amount of money, and that's been allotted to various programs around housing. I'll touch on those in a moment. But it's not enough to reach these goals. We need the partnerships. We need to be able to prioritize the funding to stretch those dollars as far as we can. Where are we investing the money? We're investing it right across the entire continuum. So for a long time, CMHC was focused in that affordable area between market and support housing. The funding that's available under the National Housing Strategy runs right from transition temporary right through the market. Idea is that we're mixing rent levels between affordable and market to make the projects more sustainable and less reliant on government funding. The strategy, like I said, is going to help the most vulnerable. So women and children fleeing violence, seniors, indigenous people, people with disabilities, mental health and addiction issues, veterans, and so on. If an application comes in with a component of those vulnerable groups being served, they're going to be prioritized under the strategy. Most of the programs are competitive, so that's one of the key pieces to bumping your application ahead of others is to be focused on that key criteria around vulnerable groups and the other criteria as well. The areas of focus under the strategy is really to create housing, modernize existing housing, create resources for community housing providers, and innovation and research. And I can share, I think I've shared this. I already sent this presentation to Lindsay, so if she hasn't already, you can certainly receive a copy of it. I know I'm going through fairly quickly. Just to give you a sense, so those are the four areas of focus. I'm not going to go through all of the programs in any sort of detail today, but I'm happy to do so. And you know what? In fact, I think that's probably not the best use of them anyway. I think the best thing to do in terms of programming is to sit down with yourselves as a municipality or any other stakeholders and really talk about what your plans are and your needs are and figuring. And I can figure out which program is the best fit to your plans. So I could give you all the details of every single program. Are you going to retain it? And is it even applicable? So I put that off right there that I'm happy at any point to sit down, talk about what the needs of the community are, what the needs are around affordable housing, and I can match your plans to these programs. Essentially, the biggest question I usually get is that what's the definition of affordability? And that depends on, there is a general one that no more than 30% of your income, gross income, is being spent on housing costs. But, and then there's a specific list of costs. But in these programs, we may have a slightly definition depending on the purpose of the program. So for example, the Rental Construction Financing Program is a supply program. So our affordability measure there is that the proponent prices, the rents, 10% below market on an average. But if you look at the National Housing Co. Investment Fund, which is the largest program under the strategy, that one prioritizes vulnerable groups. So we look for 30% of the rents to be at 80% of the CMA rent figures for the area. And I can help you get those numbers. But just to, we're deep discounting 30% of the rents, and the remaining 70% can get market. So again, going to that sustainability. So there's five programs here. In addition to these four, sorry, there's also seed funding for upfront costs before you even get into construction. There's also mortgage insurance that we can talk about that can give stakeholders more attractive terms of banking, facilitate that as well. And check on the timing. I think I only have a minute left, so we'll carry through quickly. Under modernizing, there's similar programs that we have different streams. So we have repair, and we also have new construction. So new was the last slide. This would be modernizing programs. But resources for community housing providers, we just launched the Community Housing Transformation Center. There's a website dedicated to them. So any nonprofits or yourselves that want to tap into some of those resources, that's just an independent center that you can access to help build capacity around housing. There's also the Federal Housing Community Initiative for any federal housing and the community tenant base is similar. Again, we can go through those in detail when we talk about your needs. And then lastly, the focus is around innovation and research. And as you'll see here, there's four here, and there's a full list here of different research programs that we launch at different times throughout the year that you can access to do some research around housing. So I, and there's also this, I'll point at this false one here on the fourth one, on one, two, three, four, or five down, the Expert Community on Housing. That is something you can sign up for, and I can send you a link. And it's a monthly call from different housing experts that come on and discuss different housing-related matters free of charge. So I can certainly send you that link afterwards if you're interested in something like that. I did want to point out, and I'm on the second last slide here, there's a number of COVID-related programs that have our measures that have come out related to housing. Here's the list, and they're on our website, and I put the link to the website there. And I, there were some stories that I touched on, and again, I won't get into detail because I'm coming out of my time here.
Jill, take your time. Take your, you're good.
There's been success stories from Nova Scotia specifically around some projects that have taken advantage of the National Housing Strategy. And I always like to put a face to the programs because I mean, we can talk about programs all day long, but do they actually work and are they accessible? And here's two examples of some accessible projects in Nova Scotia. One is the Briny House in Halifax, and it's one that is an emergency shelter for women and children. And we've, I don't know the exact stage, and I'd have to look for it, but I can get you some more details on those programs. If you go, the next slide, I'm going to have a link to our National Housing Strategy. And on there, there's success stories of great across the country, and you'll find Briny House. We've also supported through the Rental Construction Financing Program. Sorry, Briny would have been the National Housing Co. Investment Fund. The one to your right is a development in, oh shoot, I just lost the name. Woodman's Grove, which is out in the valley, I believe. I used to live in Nova Scotia for a number of years. And it's a multi-unit building with a rental construction program. And that injected a number of units within that market, that area. It's a supply program, so it was meant to, again, not so much deep discount as it would have been for Briny in terms of rents charged, but it would have been more, there would have been a mix of market and affordable rents in that project. And you can get more details online. This is the website that takes you directly to our cmhc.ca. And there's a number of tools for housing providers that can be found. You can also follow us on social media through Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, LinkedIn. We have regular updates there. And this website here, placedtocallhome.ca, that's the website that will link you directly to the National Housing Strategy, those success stories I talked about, touched on briefly, and also all the programming that I touched on. So there's a fact sheet on every single program, but I encourage you to reach out to myself, and I'd love to set a meeting up. Like I said, inform me through Lindsay if you'd like to sit down and talk about your specific needs for your community and figure out where we can, or for your stakeholders, your private developers, your community groups, and figure out where we might be able to partner together and get some housing built or repaired if that's what you would go with. So thank you very much. I'll open it up to some questions. I know that was quick and brief, but work with the time we have. And like I said, we can certainly follow up.
Thank you, Jill. That was great. A lot of information in a short amount of time. We'll have to go back over it. So I can't see hands. So who has a question?
I do. When you want.
Is that, who's that?
Well, I hate to be the first to go. It was Cliff.
Oh, I can't, I can't see you or hear you. So, okay, go ahead, Cliff.
So Jill, has any of this been placed in budget?
Oh, yes, yeah. It's all, it's all, it's all solidified in budget, the $55 billion. And it's been, it's been, there's different buckets of where the money is being directed to. And for example, one would be to the province of Nova Scotia, and it would be, I believe, the bilateral agreement was signed last year. And from that, there should be an action plan and programming that would be specific to the province of Nova Scotia and the needs of the province. Another bucket was given to us, and that's those programs we just touched on. Another bucket would have been given into Northern Indigenous. And all of those are placed into the budget. My understanding is that through legislation, they can't be easily changed with a change in government. The strategy is set, and I don't know what the political terms are for the legislation, but my understanding is it's available. And.
So you helped me out a lot with the answer because I was aware that there was a pot of money for Nova Scotia signed by our Minister of Housing I think in the run-up to the election. And it was $10 million. And when you read the fine prints, a million dollars a year over 10 years, how the hell are we going to get this thing anywhere close to what your aspirations are or targets are, rather, with that amount of money?
I'd have to look into that, and I'll just give you a little bit of background. Having just come into the role, literally when COVID started, so I came into the role and everything shut down. My previous involvement was with, I covered the province of Newfoundland and Labrador, and I was involved in negotiating the bilateral agreement in this province. But I'm not as familiar with Nova Scotia's agreement. I do have a colleague that can help us answer some questions around that because she's directly involved. That's now 1 million over 10 years. I'm not sure specifically what programming that would refer to, if that's just a piece of it or if that's the total. But I can certainly look into it and get back to you on that.
Yeah, we did, we've been working on a project for three years in town, and we understand that that was the program under which our project, which is ongoing, would be funded. So, and that's why I asked the question because these targets you've set are really large, and they would involve a heck of a lot more dollars coming toward Nova Scotia than a million dollars a year, I would think. Or yes, a million dollars a year of 10.
Yeah, I would think higher, but I'd like to dig into it first before confirming.
So the other question I have is this, when you say 300,000 existing housing representing three times as many units repaired and renewed under federal programs from 2005 to 2015. Did you do the numbers from 1995 till 2005?
I don't have them really available. Find out if they exist. Sure. Yeah.
And have you done the numbers from 2015 until now?
I'm thinking there's some data available, but I'm not sure to what extent. The strategy would have started last.
Is there any possibility that the 2005 to 2015 is a comment on the previous government's activity on this file?
Possibly. I didn't create that stat, so I'm not sure what the intention behind that was. I would think it's related to the fact that there wasn't a specific strategy in place, and the program that was in place would have produced that stat. But I don't know what the intention behind the including it there is.
It's mentioned on the 2005 to 2015 compare on the page five. So my concern is this, you know, if you watch CNN enough, you'll figure out that Trump's always trying to undo Obama, and I'm just hoping that this government isn't trying to undo Harper. That's the substance of my question on this one.
You know, my thoughts on that is that it's a step in the right direction. It's developing and putting in place foundation for housing that may or may not have existed before. I think many would suggest that without the strategy in place, there was a lot of groups trying to accomplish the same, but not, maybe not necessarily working in tandem. So I think that that strategy accomplishes that, and it's just moving whatever was the base under Harper forward. That's my take on it, but that's my own personal opinion.
Obviously, the precondition is that this whole notion of a human right, and that's when, that changes everything. It's changed all the water on the bees. Was that done by legislation or is it strictly something shared by government?
I believe it was June of last year. It's been put into legislation. Yeah. And then you're right, it's a game changer. There's, and something else with the strategy that is really, I think, a really positive thing is that it's being reviewed every three years. So the idea is that we're accountable to reach these goals. You know, we have a portion of those to meet through the strategy, but the accountability to the strategy is that if it's not working, we're going to fix it before the 10 years are up. And we say, you know, oh geez, that 10 years, we didn't make it. We're going to fix it along the way. And we've already done some shifts and changes to our programming to reflect things that haven't been working. For example, emergency shelters that have repair needs that are urgent. Previously, you had to get, you know, X number of reports, and it would take months before you could apply. Now we've sped up and made exceptions. So, so I think there's.
Thanks. Some other questions. I'll give you a little comment. You're in St. John's, I take it, are you?
I am, yeah.
Why don't you go down to the wharf, you can say hello to my grandson.
Who's that? Oh, sorry, what's his name?
Boy, you gotta do it.
Oh, you broke up there. I couldn't hear. I just asked what his name was.
Nova Scotia boats over there showing you guys how to catch crab.
My dad and my brother-in-law are both crab fishermen, so I'll let them know that. I'll tell him to speak up to my grandson.
You lost three people down on the St. Lawrence, or four, I guess.
Four. That was terrible.
Any?
All the questions I have, your worship.
All right. Any more questions, folks? I can, I can't see you all. Maybe Jill, you can take down the presentation so I can see everybody.
Yeah, sorry. I'll do that. There we go.
Okay. So any more questions for Jill? Wade, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that housing is one of the most important things here that we need to address. There's poverty here. There's housing issues here. And I would very much, I don't know if as a council, if not as a council, I certainly would like to speak with you about what is being offered. And I'm sure as a council, we'd want to anyway. I don't know if that would require some kind of a motion or a request, but I really feel that housing needs to be addressed, and it's very important to push this along.
Yeah. So I mean, Wade, if you wanted to, if we wanted to make a motion to set up a separate meeting where we just take an hour or more to chat with her and come in with specific questions, certainly do that. I mean, I know I have a lot of questions as well, but I have to make my way through the process. There's, yeah, there's both sides to this. So yeah, by all means, if you want to do that.
Yeah. In a longer session, we could, I could provide a little more in-depth information, and then we can, we can chat about that and go with the question. I'd be happy to do that at any point, yeah.
Okay. So Wade, you want to make that motion, and Lindsay can set something up?
Yes, I will. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this discussion as a council, perhaps with an individual meeting to vote it only to it with Jill Snow.
Second.
Good. Second by Dawn. Any discussion on it?
Question? Yeah. Your worship, anything we can do to make CMHC move and maybe abridge those timelines on that project?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. So Lindsay, in my, in my screen, she's right above you there, Jill. And she will, she will set something up. She'll reach out, set something up, and we'll give council some time to kind of go through these documents because we have your presentation and come up with some questions that are pertinent to us and the things that we want to move forward, including projects that we have on the books. Yeah.
Yeah, and if we need some time, maybe at the beginning, and maybe you guys could have the floor, and you can explain in more detail the needs, and then that way I can make sure I'm hearing the information. I'd be happy to do that. And I'll, Cliff, I'll see if I can get some answers for you on those couple of questions. And if I don't get them back to you before the meeting, I'll bring them to the meeting. How's that?
He's good.
He's good.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Any more questions for Jill before she hops off? Looks like we're good.
All right. Excellent. Very nice to meet you all virtually, and I look forward to meeting in person at some point when things open back up.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you. Thanks.
We'll talk soon.
Okay, folks. So Lindsay will set that up. All righty. Okay, so staff reports. That's where we are. So we've got the CAO report. Any questions on that? Do we have the lights done on, down at the South Building? Or the South Centennial School?
Is it?
The light, the lights?
Direct staff to investigate the repair of the outdoor outside court lights at South Centennial. We did that a long time ago.
Those courts are lighted. Or supposed to be.
The lights don't work. They used to be.
I can only hear one person at a time. So who's talking? My, 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 my hearing thing is muffled too because I'm at the office. Okay, Jeff?
The, so that was directed, and I reached out to Frank to get an update on that. And he, the last he heard was that Mike Ryan had came and taken a look, was going to give a quote. He hasn't heard back, but he will, he will, he will let me know. Now, I understand Todd was involved in that too, so I'll chase that down and find out what the latest is. But you may be looking at replacement of both the light fixtures as well as the switching device.
Okay. All right. For some reason, I thought that happened a long time ago, and I didn't know where we were. So the other one is, on the second page, the interest rate reduction from the water utility. So I probably missed something. So are we allowed to put it at 10% before we get permission from UARB?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we have to make that motion as utility, which you did.
Right on.
And then we have to write to the UARB with the rationale, and they will approve it.
All right. Does that take a while?
In that case, I say, in that, no, it won't take, it won't take long at all. The, and I say they will approve it because other utilities in the province have done exactly this. So we know that they're supportive of that, that sort of change.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, who has questions for Jeffrey? Jeffrey Gushu, CAO.
Your worship, I wanted to offer something that isn't in my report, but staff have been working on the plan for a return to the reopening of Town Hall. As testing results in the province, the flattening of the curve has gone extremely well. And as we were saying at the beginning of this call, this end of the province has been extremely fortunate. We're putting in place a plan to reopen Town Hall with all of the appropriate state procedures and maybe modifications
maybe modifications that will allow us to open safely and respect the social or physical distancing recommendations. And so that, if all goes planned to plan and if nothing changes in, in the province, we could see the public back in Town Hall later in June.
Good.
Okay.
Hairdressers think they're going to open on the eighth.
I think they are.
So one of the, one of the issues with that, your worship, is the hairdressers were ordered to close. And they have a provincial association that has, was required to present Dr. Strang with protocols that they would follow. And then those are given back to the hairdressers that wish to open, to be able to open. We don't have that same benefit. We were not ordered to close. We closed because of the recommendations to stay the blazes home and the social distance and so on. And so we've, we've worked from home and we will be coming back to the office, but it's up to us in our circumstance to develop our, our protocols and procedures for our building. We don't have, for instance, NSFM did not take a lead on getting procedures and protocols in place for municipalities.
Right on. Okay. All right, we good folks, any other questions for Jeff?
Your worship, I should say that in, in pointing out NSFM, I could equally, equally say AMA did not take a lead in, in developing that. That wasn't a shot at the, at the NSFM.
Oh, AMA asked the question, didn't they? I think you got a questionnaire asking.
Yeah, we, we, I did get a questionnaire about that, yeah.
You can shoot at NSFM all you want. Doesn't affect me. Okay. Fire department. I guess we're good, there's no report there, but our, you haven't done anything on the chief, I suppose.
I've got no update on that, your worship, except to say that our shortlist was confirmed just last week with our, with our consultant.
Good stuff. Okay. Operational services, so Chad. Any questions for Chad? Dude, I read all this today.
He's doing a good, Chad's doing a good job, or his staff is.
Yeah, I have to say this truth. Wade, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment actually on the report because it does mention it. I think it's worth mentioning again as a thank you to all of our citizens and stakeholders who were so careful with compost. Once we started pointing out the fact that compost was, was full of plastics, there's free Class A compost that's available at the solid waste park. And it's part of that report and it's always worth mentioning again because it's, this is quality stuff, it really is. And it's something that we're doing as a town to show our appreciation to the public for their efforts towards doing what they did. So thank you all for that.
Thanks, Wade. And Mike, I know Mike's on here too. Mike did an amazing job of getting the word out there, you know, on all fronts. So it helped the community understand. Cliff?
We're doing it as a region, not just the town.
Yeah.
It's one of the, one of the, one of the tri-county or tri-minisciple agreements that's actually working.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the, you know, we, we, we accept the organic waste from Digby and Yarmouth Counties. And, you know, the, the team that worked on, that worked on this were supported right out of the gates by Town of Digby. Tom Ossinger particularly stepped up and, and took steps immediately in support of our concern around the plastics. And so as a thank you to the Town of Digby, Chad is arranging to deliver a truckload of Class A compost to, to the town.
Very nice.
Good stuff. Anything else for Chad, folks? Keep it up. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, planning. There is a report there that Judy did up. Questions on that? Asset management and infrastructure. I think Mark's on. Be good, any questions on that one? Leap Street starting on Monday, I got a couple of phone calls.
Yes, it's actually going to be Wednesday, a couple of test holes, top and bottom of the hill. Then we move to the outfall on the, at the water and then we'll work our way back. So there's a communication going to go out on that tomorrow. And we've, we've, we've knocked on doors to, to explain it, but there will be a period that the, the portion of leave is going to be shut down.
But the businesses now?
The, the, they, they do. The contractor has taken the lead in, in, in reviewing it. Perhaps our communications should, should have gone out in advance of that. But they're scheduled to go tomorrow.
Any questions for Mario's on his lap? Go ahead, Wade.
Sorry, I'm becoming a pain. I could ask this actually to Frank, but I'll ask you anyway because it's on your report. And that's how are things going at Lake Milo where renovations are taking place?
Frank and I were there an hour ago. We can, but we either one can answer that question.
How's it going?
Great, in three weeks, who wants to come and take a look? It's actually, actually.
Looks awesome.
We're starting the finishes later, later on this week. And everybody is coming together nice.
Good.
Good, any more?
Mark or Frank? Have you got any ideas for a phase two for that Milo boat hub project for next year's budget?
The, the next part is the upstairs banquet room, floor, renovations to the kitchen, exterior work. There's, there's all kinds of stuff there that we can do.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Good? Thanks, gentlemen. Yes, Phil.
Your worship, do we need a motion maybe to look at a phase two? Or should we, that could be done a little later, just to put it maybe in, in next year's budget, maybe put it in place?
Up to you, we can wait. We can wait on.
Once we get the tour, like you said, in a couple of weeks, then we'll look, go upstairs and have a look to see what has to be, what has to be done, what we can go on site probably be the best idea.
Yeah.
I lived my whole, my whole, I lived my whole life in that place until I left town when I was 17. Every summer.
Me, me too. Actually, actually, I've been in the building since, with the renovations ongoing. So it's, it's going to look nice at the end, as Mark says.
I got a bloodsucker underneath a bathing suit when I was about five or six years old, size of a python. I thought it was the size of a python, I could tell you. They used to, you know what, bathing suits in those days were wool.
Oof. Yeah, they were wool.
Jerry? Finance is up, so I don't know, anybody got questions for Jerry?
How is the bill paying? How is the bill paying coming in, Jerry, so far as, as far as you know?
So far, it's, uh, looks pretty, pretty normal. We've, we've been monitoring it, I've been monitoring it with civil's help. We've run some A R reports based on last year, last year's dates at the end of May and then the, the end of the first week in June. And compare those to where we are today. So went through our list, this, where we are today. And, you know, there's some, some bigger, bigger amounts still outstanding from the bigger companies, but I would expect them to pay. They normally hold their money till the last day, so it's, it's kind of typical that we get, 70% of our tax revenue in between this week and next. And I include next week because some do pay online or through, through the banks and it takes a day or two to get those processed. So I know last year, when I looked at the reports, the first week of June, we, we processed about $1.3 million, I think it was, off the top of my head, in payments, so those were payments that would have been made on May 31st, but we only got the information on the second, third and fourth of June. So I would have guessed that'll be similar this year. I have had a few inquiries from a couple of homeowners. One, one that's kind of a split assessment, they have part business, part residential. And they said that they closed their business because of COVID and wondering what could be done. So just let them know that, you know, they, if they're looking for an assessment change, that's through P V S. And try to point them in the direction of some programs that might be available to them. And one, one larger Stars Road account, I'll say, inquired, and I just let them know that so far our help for taxpayers has just been to reduce the tax rate or the interest rate down to 10%. So bills are still due the end of this week.
Thank, thank you, Jerry.
Good, any more questions for Jerry? Good, thanks, Jerry. I'd love to know next, at the end of next week, what's in, what's not.
Yeah, I'll have a report for you to, to share.
Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's on, we've got the report here. Questions for Frank?
Frank, it must be, must be a quiet summer, Frank.
Quieter, but it's a different summer. We're doing lots of planning, but we're waiting for restrictions and guidance from the province, so.
So the problem.
We've got scenario planning happening.
The problem with some of the announcements has been so far, on a Friday afternoon, we're opening parks, like stuff like that. So we're gonna, we're going to, um, that's not going to happen. That, that will, that will not happen from here on out, hopefully. So we've, we've had conversations through NSFM with regard to that. And also the understanding that if, if, if and when they do say, for example, day camps, they can't just say day camps are open on Monday because you have to hire, I don't have to tell you the list, but the list is long and it's, it's tedious work and it's hiring people, it's everything in between. So we have made the message loud and clear that we can't, can't just make those announcements and expect something to happen right out of the gate. The, there should be a lead-up time. I think they actually might have done some of that today, but had Dr. Strang off for an hour and a half last week and, and he understood that as well. So, so that's good for, for you guys, just can't open stuff on a, on the fly.
Yeah, it, I guess the work that we've been doing is we've been providing information to Debbie Smith, who's our, our regional representative for communities, culture and heritage. And she's been feeding that back into all the, the regional reps around the province. But I think the work and the scenario planning and trying to look at things on how we could get things somewhat operating and open isn't going much further than the regional reps around the province. So as it goes up the, the levels, I think there's some misinformation and miscommunication happening. So hopefully, like you said, Mayor Moon, it, it will be a bit better communicated and that we'll get some lead time before announcements are made that start, you know, people in panics. And last week was the, the case around the 15,000 children and youth in Halifax that weren't going to have anywhere to go because H R M canceled their summer day camps. So that caused a lot of people in our area to inquire about summer day camps. Is it going, is it going to happen? What's going on? So we've been politely answering those questions the best that we can. But right now with groups of five still being in place, it's virtually impossible for for day camps to happen. And really, even if we go to groups of 15 is what's being rumored, day camps are going to be very difficult to operate in small groups of 15 because of the physical distancing. So part of our scenario planning has been more activity-based rather than an actual day camp. So it's definitely going to be different, but again, we're, we're only surmising what is going to come down from the province.
Okay, any questions for Frank?
Frank went by St. Ambrose last night and I noticed that one of the nets was missing from the, one of the courts. Are they going to repurpose that for pickleball or is there just a delay in getting it?
It's a broken end cap that we've got on order and we can't put the net up until the end cap is replaced.
Well, here in the next little while, so. Tennis courts are open, aren't they, right now? Frank?
Tennis courts are open and we did put lines for pickleball on the center court at St. Ambrose.
Yeah, you did that last year and did you get much of an uptake on it?
Not really. A few people that play, so a few people that play that have the paddles and balls have been using the court, but really not a whole lot. Pickleball hasn't really taken off in the community yet. The YMCA has had a small gathering from time to time. Some local people that travel in the wintertime to Florida, when they come back home, they've, they've done some pickleball at the Y. We've had a little bit locally in schools, but not a huge uptake yet.
Frank, just in case you don't know, it's a fast growing sport in North America. It's heavily concentrated in, with seniors and others, right down to youth. And we're missing out. They had a tournament down in Bridgewater last year, 179 people went down and played in the tournament in Bridgewater. So we're missing out on that one. Maybe we should be looking into it.
I hear you loud and clear, Councilhood. And we're anticipating with the upcoming 55-plus games that are coming to Yarmouth, that we've heard there's a law, large draw for pickleball. So that, that definitely will make some, you know, cause some excitement in the area. But yeah, it's, it is a growing sport. But again, we, we do have some equipment, maybe we need to push it a little bit. Little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, Frank, you want to talk about the skateboard park a little bit?
So on the weekend, the, the techs were flying back and forth around the, the skate park. The skate park had numerous, I guess lots of kids in there not physically distancing and council, council rightfully had lots of concerns with that. So a security guard, Sonny, that works with the town with the parking enforcement through McKenzie Security has been placed at the park. Everything since Monday at noon time seems to be running okay. We're only Wednesday now, but when we were down there on Monday, we gave Sonny some, some info sheets to pass out. The signs were, were put up around the five users in the park. I spoke with three parents and about eight kids. Who were excellent. Even the kids were telling the other kids that were coming to the park that they had to wait. And. I don't think, I I haven't heard anything now if if anyone's going after. Eight o'clock and not obeying the physical distancing rules, but. So far, so good with. With a couple of days of supervision. The plan is to have security there for two weeks. And after that, hopefully people get the the idea. That they are to keep distance and follow the rules.
Good. Any more questions?
I just had one update just from the earlier question, Your Worship, about the. The South Centennial, the old South Centennial School Court Lights. Todd and I were there with Mike Ryan when he looked at the light. The the conversation from Mike seemed like it wasn't that big of a job. To repair and get those lights working again. But a quote never was received from Mike Ryan. So in talking with Todd. Todd seemed. I'm not sure. I think he had a discussion with Counselor Steve Barry. And he may have thought that. I guess priority was going to be placed on the south end playground lights. So maybe there's a little bit of confusion there, but Mike Ryan did do a scan. And looked at the existing infrastructure that's there. And like I said, the comment seemed positive, positive that it wasn't a big fix.
Good, thanks. I was just gonna say too, the. The playground, just and Frank's right, the techs were going hot and heavy all weekend. And. Everything from washrooms to everything in between. So my brother Fred's right across the street. So he's, Sonny's gonna use his washroom and. Actually, Counselor Steve went in and set up a tab in case Sonny needs a cold drink on a hot day. And actually, Counselor Steve also. Put a call out for equipment because we said, you know what, you can't be in that park without the proper equipment. And. So I went down a couple of times. I know Steve did, Frank did, Todd was there. Just checking and Sonny said he'd already received a bunch of equipment for kids that may not be able to afford it. So thanks for that, Steve.
You're welcome.
Want to be able to have everybody use it that that can. And and people are really happy that it's open. And they're fought, so far they're following the rules. So it's. It's good that got taken care of quickly.
Yep, just to, just to speak to that, Mayor Moon. I was down there when it opened at noon and there were three or four kids who needed a helmet. So. Just put a plea out on Facebook, which always seems to work with our community. And by the time I got to Canadian Tire to pick up four helmets and get back. I'd already received donations to pay for all four. So those kids got to keep those ones. And then we put a plea out to anyone who wanted to stop by and just drop them off to Sonny. Sonny graciously agreed to keep them in his. In his trunk and if kids need them, they're there. So once again, the community dropped three or four off within the hour and. No kids going without, at least as far as for need of helmet and stuff. So I think that speaks once again to what our community does anytime there there's a need, so.
It sure does. Sure does. And I was saying, you know, when the kids show up and they didn't have any equipment, so taken care of.
All good.
Questions for Frank, anybody? Good. Thanks, Frank.
I got a quick question. Your worship for Steve. Follow up. Steve, how much those helmets cost?
Anywhere from about thirty five to forty five dollars at full price. Canadian Tire had a few for the youth on for nineteen ninety nine, but a. Full price right around forty bucks, give or take.
And. Those kids use knee pads and elbow pads, don't they, someone?
The the helmet rule is being enforced one hundred percent, whereas the knee pads and that are more at the discretion. That's kind of more for the either the really younger ones or kind of the experienced ones who. Want to do the flips and the, yeah, all that a little bit. So, yeah, there's, there is quite a few kids that are wearing them. Most that I've seen around down there, especially those with the scooters. So. Yeah, it is a little costly for the equipment, but where Jay Strong's also there. I let Sonny know that if any kid. Really needs anything, they can apply through us and we'd be happy to help out too, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Good folks. Okay. Economic Development, Miss Natalie.
Hi there. I'm sorry, I have no camera to do a visual. Jeff hasn't seen my face for. I am available to answer any of your questions.
So. So Natalie, I'll start with this. Did you listen to the announcement today?
Uh, no.
Okay.
On another meeting.
All right, so off the top of my head in a nutshell. Businesses that, businesses that were asked to close. Can open on June the fifth. But they have to sort of send that plan to Dr. Strang or at least their organization would send that to Dr. Strang. The ones that. Weren't asked to close. Can open at any time as long as they're following the health protocols. So we'll see. We'll see some of those opening. Can't remember the rest, but there's. There's going to be grants. You know. Finances to help businesses get up and running. So I I think, I think that today's is a really good one. Take a peek at. I I'm certainly going to go through it with a fine tooth comb. Just so I understand exactly what's. You know, what's on there. So.
Yeah, so Your Worship, I have been working with a client service. Delivery group that's made up of E D Os around the region. And the Western Run. So we have been reaching out. Sometimes two or three times a week with updates to the program. And we are doing consultations with businesses. I know for sure the Yarmouth Chamber has been. Proactive and they are meeting. With retailers and other businesses to help guide them. So I think. Pretty up. We just had another meeting today on those programs. But there still are some people falling through the cracks like. Home based businesses.
Yes.
Are one of the ones that we identified that may be falling through the cracks. And yeah, so there's still some work to do. So I appreciate your update.
Yeah. It's restaurants for dine in, takeout, delivery, personal services, hair salons. Barbers, fitness facilities, gyms, yoga, vets. So they're all, they're all good to go. And some of the others, of course, have to, have to wait, but but yeah, so that's. Or I guess we're opening up, but they're under the health protocol. So that's good to hear. So anybody have questions for Natalie or is there anything you want to? Compared to. What you're doing?
I just have two things to add, if I may.
Certainly.
Um, so you might have seen on Maine and Brown that we have the anchor event signage now up stalls. And so the purpose of that is really for us to identify anchor events in the downtown. So understanding that we have some that have been canceled. I know Your Worship and Counselors Barry and perhaps. Their way Cleveland, you guys have an events committee. So if there's something. You know, that's coming up that you would like to. Put on that board, we can get that quoted and there. Augusta did give me some feedback and they suggested in lieu of of having a slew of events in the downtown happening this year. That we can put the hashtags local by local. Enforce that. So appreciate any feedback.
Yeah, so, yeah, I agree. We have to push people to be buying local. It kind of bothers me when I go on social media and I see. You know, everybody's shopping online because we. We really don't want that to be a habit. We really don't because that that closes down businesses in a snap. So so yes. I think a buy local, shop local. Would be a really good place to start. The other thing, what did I say to you the other day, Jeff? Something about heroes, but it wasn't heroes, rock stars, okay? I I said, put hashtag you're all heroes or something and and Jeff. Jeff said, you know what, rocks, rock stars might be even a different. We want to be, we want to have a positive message in the community right about now. That's really important. Wade?
Um, well, I was going to kind of line up with what you were saying. I had a conversation with Neil McKenzie. From Yarmouth and Acadian Shores, of course, it's Tourism Week. And I think that what they're doing right now, they're kind of on the right track. And so we could kind of steal some of their hashtags that they're using because they're doing the stay at home. They're, they're pushing staycations. That kind of thing. And I think it's, it's key that at this time, as things begin to open up, that we. Help those who are local, the mom and pop businesses. The only tourism we're going to have is that is if we partake of whatever is being offered, all of that. Staycations, eat at home, show support for the local. Restaurants that are open, takeouts, all of it. So I think we should line something up in that direction.
Yeah.
There is one other thing to add that actually piggybacks on what Counselor Cleveland just said. Is, oh, I am gathering some data. For the restaurants that are located in the downtown. That have no private property, whether or not they are. Looking to access our street cafe permit. Would that be enough capacity for their in dining requirements? And would they also be looking at public spaces? So I'm hoping to. Have that information gathered and have a staff report ready to come back to the C A O and counsel on that.
Excellent. Yeah, we could do some really cool stuff there, you know, to get around that. Social distancing piece.
Do we? Do we charge, or Natalie, do we charge for outdoor? Like with sip cafe had one and Jake said. Heritage, do we charge for those, those permits?
I'll have to check. I can't remember off the top of my head if.
No, Jeff is saying no.
Okay.
I wanted to pick up on Wade's, Counselor Cleveland's comments. I think we should be a little bit careful about what we consider to be staycations in this sense. I think we should focus on staycation within the province. Because there are four hundred and fifty going on five hundred thousand people in Halifax. And I know they still have COVID down there a bit, but. We're, we're twenty seven thousand people here in Yarmouth County. And if we just sit around doing our own little thing down here. And don't participate or go up and use things in Halifax, Cape Breton, I think we're hurting ourselves. I think it's a province where I. Focus that we're staying on. To some extent, anyway, I think.
Yeah, I think. I think that's the whole push, is it not, Wade? It's, it's, it's Tourism Nova Scotia that is pushing staycation within the province, Cliff. You're right. It it is. Yeah, I mean, we need our B and Bs to be full. Well, you know, I'm not going to go to a B and B in Yarmouth, but I'm going to use one somewhere else. So that's what we're after.
Thinking about going down to Sherbrooke or someplace, spend some time down there or. Or even Cape Breton, whatever, something different. Not going south, not going to Ontario or out west or something like that.
Yeah.
I think the point is, is that our province is gorgeous. And we should be supporting provincially and locally whenever we can now especially. Yeah, stop the, stop the trips to, you know, down south or, you know, don't be planning trips to British Columbia or anywhere like that, which you can't do anyway. But admire the fact that we're lucky in that we have some of the most gorgeous places in the world and they're right here. So a lot of people who maybe have been looking outwards needs to look a little closer to home. And that's, that's the, that's the gist of it.
Yeah. Exactly. Wade?
Wade? Got a question for Wade, the the chair he has. Is it, I know Neil's been working like on the Nova Scotia aspect, is it? And I talked about it, I had a good talk with him the other day at a. A local business establishment and he's talking about how they're, they're doing their focus more inward to Nova Scotia. Uh, is there? I don't want to. Is there a way for us, maybe it's the council, to help some of the local restaurants, hotels? Maybe to develop with with a little more money from from the council, a developer program to come in, maybe. It might not help in June, but it might help in August, September, October, that that. September, October, November, that shoulder season stuff.
There certainly could be opportunities there. Perhaps we should have a meeting with Neil and see what's, what's required.
He's go use Mariner Center for a beer fest, set it up for the whole darn summer. He'd be able to social distance out there and still have a beer and. And a knock first or whatever, all that. Really serious? We should look at something like that.
I'm behind you a hundred percent when it comes to the beer.
Halifax for their, for whatever festival you want to call it, tell them we got a location that'll, they can comply with the social distancing rules and all that.
I'd love to be in on planning that.
Wow, looks like that'll get done.
Well, we got beer in the, we got beer in the stands there.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
So we do have an events committee and we really need, we need to get together. Or are we getting together? Lindsay, when's that? Tomorrow? Canada Day? With the Canada Day piece?
Yes, we're, we're getting together tomorrow.
Right on. Okay, well, we'll add some other things on.
Yeah, let's talk overall. What we need to do is talk overall. And I know that everything is up in the air and and most major events have all been canceled at this point, but we need, we need to talk overall and kind of cover our bases from now. Straight through until Christmas time, really. Because, you know, we have to, you, you, you're not going anywhere without laying out a plan and putting a map in place. So, you know. It's, it's the only way for it to work. So, yeah, we need that overall conversation and then kind of move from there.
Yeah.
Geez, yeah, line up some of those acts that Phil and them had and have them come in and. Put a stage up at Mariner Center and have a party fest of some kind going on there and people fill up the hotel rooms. From the city. They're going to get tired of hanging out in the city.
All right, we good?
Yeah.
Natalie, anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, thank you, Your Worship.
Thanks for everything. Okay, so we're good for business. Skate park update. We're good on that one? That's covered?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Just Frank did a good job updating that and. You know, it's kind of a situation that with the addition of. Of Sonny as an education slash security person, the, the, the issue of the overcrowding. And so on has been taken care of. Now that's, that's in place for a couple of weeks and after that. You know, maybe the social, maybe the numbers allowed will, will change. We'll see. You know, I think referring to the provincial directives. You know, we, we have turned the lights off. You may hear about that. So rather than encouraging people to be there till ten or eleven o'clock at night, the lights that we have are not coming on. So Sonny's done it eight o'clock and by, by like around nine o'clock, it's, it's starting to get darker. And. And so the kids won't be able to be there with the lights. Till later hours. And what we see, what we've seen so far is, is that once, once the supervision is gone. And this is just my observation on on the webcams is that you start to see older people showing up. And they aren't necessarily wearing helmets and. So. It's just, just the way it is.
Is, is he working? Is he working on the weekend, like what's he working, Monday to Friday or?
Well, he or somebody else from Mackenzie Security will be seven days a week.
Oh, great.
Good.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay.
Frank made those arrangements.
Cliff?
It occurred to me thinking about this and listening to you, Jeff, that if, if we kept that going, that security part of it going longer than two weeks and maybe for the whole summer, that might give an opportunity to rebuild the, you know, the responsible kids and young adults and that that go there, you know, the security aspect of it. It might be a way of building that up to where it could be and should be.
Absolutely.
What do you think, Steve?
I think it's important. I think it's pretty clear where my heart is when it comes to youth, obviously. And definitely that, that part of town is, is near and dear to me. And I think the loss of the day camps in the past and other things that may have eroded away and maybe the skate park image that it has, at least at the moment. I think this is a chance, maybe as you said, to get some kids from down there involved. And, you know, there's nothing like building from within. I, I think there's a sense of pride that comes from taking care of your own. I, I think there's a lot of kids down there that would be willing to step up. I really like the idea of that. I know some parents have, have, you know, voiced some concerns over the years about inappropriate language and stuff. And I just try not to get caught up in that. I try to let them know, I heard their concern, but to me, it's about moving forward. I think that's a great step myself.
Thanks. Thank you, Steve.
If I can jump in, we haven't heard from any student grants yet. So that may be an option for an alteration if we do get three or four student grants for job positions that we're not able to offer this year, like day camps. So that could be something that we keep in mind for a possible student position.
Yeah, I think it's important who you put in there too, right? You just, you just put just anybody in there. Just my opinion.
Student grants, what about all those students that are being stayed, paid to stay at home and sit on their hands all summer? Is there anything to make those people incentive to get out and do some work like that? Just asking.
I don't think we, those grants are more, they're more, it's, it's free money, isn't it, that the students are getting for lost jobs?
So there's no condition that they have to apply for jobs if they're available or whatever?
I think the way it was said, they were getting compensated because their normal jobs weren't available.
Don?
I still think it's important to keep the security around. I, that's a new wave that would promote, at least if we could work it into our budget, the whole summer use. I see them even branching over, over top of the hill from the scope, from the park to the playground area itself. And I think that would be a wise use of money. People from all over could use the area and feel safe. And I think it would be a big promotion for us. I think it's, it's a win-win solution for me.
Yeah.
I just could say referred to Yarmouth Recreation.
Okay.
Just, just one, just one other comment is that just keep in mind that we are, because of the situation that we're in, we're moving away from drop-in type of activities. So yes, what you're saying around supervision is happening now, I can see that. But the, what, what we're thinking is going, that's going to happen is that we're going to be permitted to do some things with small groups, hopefully. But to have a, a drop-in type of activity where you could have over the limits, that's, you know, the, the old days of the, the South Playground, just taking whoever shows up that day. That, that is probably not going to work now with the scenario that we're in for public gatherings. So hopefully it will be lifted some, but we're, we're hearing that groups, the 15 may be what we'd be looking at for the summer.
Okay, so I, unless I'm missing something, all we're, I think what we're saying is we need that skate park open for, for many reasons. We, we are also saying that somebody needs to man it to make sure that the rules are being followed, to give us a good, it's almost like a base to start again. And I hope I'm not the only one that's saying it, but that's not a teenager. That just doesn't work. I think that's what happened. I think that's what happened in the other, in the other playground, like it's, you have to, it's a different demographic and, and we have to respect, we have to respect that and work, and work with it. So there's, there's a way, I don't think, it's not about a, a program. It's about keeping that park open in a safe manner that gets it, that gets it the respect that it needs and, and lets those kids step up and, and be who they really are. Like they, you know, that's, that's what they want to do. They, they want to skate, they want to be respectful of the property and of each other. Sometimes it gets lost in translation, but I think we've got a really good chance to start again. Jeff, did you have your, were you waving?
Yeah, I was. I, I agree, your worship. I think that, you know, the thing about Sonny is, depending on him as an individual, is, is that he is a very relatable, calm, mature person who understands the role, he's compassionate, he understands the role in terms of rules, but he also understands people. And whether it's him or, or someone else with those same characteristics. I think that's the kind of leadership you need down there. Believe it or not, you know, he's serving as a role model. He's serving as, as a responsible adult who's, who's setting rules. And, and as you said, Frank, when you go down there, you see the kids picking up on that and telling each other what the rules are, right? And, and it becomes a safe environment for those kids because they know that if something happens at that park where, where somebody decides to act out and behave inappropriately, that somebody's there that's going to have their back and ensure that, that, that they're, the situation is made safe. And that can carry over into the other playground, not in the form of, of, you know, structured activity, but just in the form of, hey, you know what? This is a safe place to go and, and play with your friends appropriately socially, but not a place where you're going to get bullied, rocks thrown at you or, or see things your parents never intended for you to see at the playground. So I think, you know, refer that to Yarmouth Recreation as a, as a request from councils and, and see what they come back with. But I think for the, for the time being, you have a good situation at the skate park. And, you know, pay attention to the webcams, go on the webcams yourself and kind of watch what's going on. And, and I'm very pleased. I mean, it was overnight, the difference that, that having, having Sonny down there made.
Yeah, I agree. So you need a motion for that? Somebody want to make a motion to refer that?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thanks folks. Anything else for, where were we? Anything else on the skate park, we good?
Just one thing, your worship. I was, I was just thinking about optimizing student grants. And again, I haven't got confirmation of any grant. So yes, I hear you loud and clear that we can't put a 16-year-old first-time job for the summer down there supervised in the skate park. But we do have a number of adults that are, that qualify for student grants. So I just wanted to put that out there as an option.
Yep, yep.
We can enroll Sonny and Drake University, that place that all the teachers went to. Tell him to student, what the hell, there were.
Good idea.
He's doing a great job.
You like that?
Request for decision, electronic meetings. Jeffrey?
Your worship, so we've been having council, committee, the whole water utility meetings on this platform. I've been having staff meetings on a daily basis, numerous meetings through, through online platforms. And I think it's working. I think it's working pretty good. And, and so with that in mind, I was thinking about what's the future hold once the, the order, the public health order is lifted and the order from the minister to only meet this way goes away. And so I asked Greg, our solicitor, for, for, you know, whether or not, given changes to the M G A last year, which mandate broad interpretation for the powers of council, if in fact being present at a meeting, if, if doing so electronically would in fact meet the, meet sort of that broad interpretation that, that is new and mandated. He agreed that it, that it, it could. And so the question to council is, if, if you accept that interpretation, do you want staff to, to do some research and to bring back some bylaw amendments that would allow members of council or your advisory committees to participate in your future meetings electronically? And just as an example, you know, and I guess to bring it home, we've had members of our council over, over this mandate who have gone through difficult personal circumstances that have taken them away from their ability to participate fully in council. I do know that, that had we had the opportunity for them to participate electronically, that they would have been able to continue with their council responsibilities through those difficult times. And, and some of those people are on this call. So I think there are advantages, certainly it's not something that we should just rush into. I think we need to do a bit of research if, if you're open to it and, and come back with some recommendations. If you feel it is not the right time, I respect that, but I thought let's put it on the table for, for discussion.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor Mood. I, I was watching or messaging and watching live during the meeting in March. And I messaged, I messaged Jeff probably three or four times about, about different. As having, having Jill Snow today come and talk to us via virtual meeting is, is, you know, good, a good introduction. And having me participate and vote at a meeting in March, this past March, I would have enjoyed very much. I'm, I'm okay for now. I'll, I'll make that a motion that, that we ask staff to direct, develop a bylaw amendment.
I second the motion and I think another really, your worship would be, it would, it would help those counselors find themselves having to break down to Halifax at the last minute after a meeting. And you could be, if you had a meeting of the, of the federation, say on a Friday morning and you need to be in Halifax, you could be down in Halifax or the counselor could be down in Halifax and participating in that, in our meeting back here. Like this, this kind of a thing. So I, I think it would help those that have schedule conflicts occasionally, big time.
I agree. I, I think, yeah, I, I miss people when they're not at the table because they can't make it to a physical meeting. We really, we really miss when everyone's not at the table. I think part of the, I think part, part of what we put in there, Jeff, are, you know, we have to have some crambers, of course, because we know, I mean, let's just call, it's the standing joke, but it's a fact, you know, that people would go away for six months down south, still call themselves counselors because they're coming on two meetings a month. Like that just, I mean, for me, it doesn't cut it. But I think, I think if you're representing the community, you need to be in the community to do that to a certain extent. Doesn't mean you don't take a month or so off, but, you know, there's all kinds of things that we can put in there or figure out.
I think, Pam, that can be part of the investigation that staff will do. Because I would, I would totally agree with you that if someone were to leave Yarmouth on December the 25th and not come back until April the 25th, not fair. Not fair to the, not fair to the citizens, not only the town of Yarmouth, but I always think of the whole county. So not there at all.
So the motion is to recommend staff be directed to develop a bylaw, bylaw amendment for our council meetings bylaw. And it would provide the rules for members of council and council advisory committees to be present during meetings by electronic means. So that's just to look into it and pull something together? Someone want to make that motion?
We've already made it, Cliff and I have made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll just pick up quickly on that. If we do it, Jeff, maybe it would be wise that it's, you know how we do motions to excuse counselors? Maybe it would be one of those ones where the counselor seeking to do that would seek council's approval to do it and it would go that way. And then it wouldn't get out of hand, if you know what I mean, Jim, when you're concerned?
Okay, all that. Sure.
Yep, that'll be part of what, what we look into is the, the conditions under which it's acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay, so moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Where am I? Correspondence, we have nothing, additions, okay, additions, ball field, fill up, you're on.
Is Frank still on the phone, your worship?
Who?
Frank.
Frank's here, yeah.
Yeah, I had an interesting conversation with a citizen today about the ball field on the other side of Pleasant Street going towards the Haley Road, right opposite of 69 Southeast Street. And I went into the gentleman's yard and he had not only scattering of softballs going into his yard, he had 27 softballs in a bin that had been hit either his house or property, over the last little bit. I know Frank, I think you talked to this gentleman, I think signage would be good, but I, I'd like to make a motion that we explore the idea of setting up a net at that ball field. Because when I was there talking to the gentleman, we had two or three senior citizens that were living just up above on the, on the Jarvis Road section. So they were coming down, going, using that for a walkway. So I think it's about 450, you know, to the, to the, to the field. But there was numerous balls that guy had, he had a couple of baseballs. He had over, he had 27 softballs in his bin and he'd given away a bunch, I guess. So I think it's a problem, mostly, you wouldn't have to do the whole field, you only have to do about, about half of it and do it the same way that you did the one at the small ball field at Gateway Park.
Sounds like Dave LeBlanc's problem.
Oh, no, it's not, Cliff, it's on the other side.
No, but I mean, that's what they had.
Yeah, David Mike for years and years and years and years had that problem, yeah. But they have a, they got the system down there that they have the poles up there. And they got the net, it's ready to go in once we open up the parks. But I think signage is a good start, but not everybody's going to patrol it all the time. Not everybody reads the signs and, and you can just park right there, walk it on the ball field and, and whack a couple. And there is a lot of people that are using that Southeast Street corridor now for fourth and fourth nightly walks coming up. Because if you notice how many new units we have at the upper end of Jarvis Street and Southeast Street, it's a lot. So no sidewalk there, Frank?
So, yeah, I spoke with Sean Sonnier about it. I'm, I've got a note to call Mr. Haley, the resident lives across from Traveler's Field. What my concern with putting a net up is if it, that field is for Pee-wee use and down. So it's a very small field. That's, that's why all the balls are flying out of there. So I told Sean that I would put a sign up, which which we did, and that we would try and to communicate that through our local slow pitch league. Um that that field is not to be used for a homer dome for slow pitch. Um there's two perfectly good fields just around the corner. So so my feeling is it, to me, if we put a net up ten feet high, it's not going to stop all the balls flying out of there. So even if we had a twenty-foot-high net, it's not going to stop all the balls. It will stop some. But to me, the the way to address it, and I I mentioned that to Sean, he didn't like it. But I think to address it through the users first and to keep in talks with Mr. Haley. And if that doesn't work, then we'll have to try to put a net up. But to me, um
If you talk to Mr. Haley, uh and and if the sign is because of ballpark, they're closed right now, aren't they?
Nope, they're open. They're open.
He had a whack of balls in that thing. If you could talk to him, Frank, and I'm not only concerned about his property, but also concerned about people walking by there too. I don't want the net to have an automatic security that's going to do something, but uh I think we
And and I, I am concerned as well, and I'm I'm almost thinking that when when these balls were being hit, it's when the ball fields were closed. And because of the location of that field, it's kind of hidden and out of the way. So I think people were going there to hit balls rather than going over on Mariners or veterans because it's more visible from Forester. So I'll keep an eye on it.
Talk to him, if you can do me a favor, talk to him maybe uh every uh uh once a week for the next two or three weeks, just to see how it's going, and then we can go from there.
Yes, for sure. It's a little league ball field.
And you can do the sign. I didn't know if there was any signage because I practice more towards center field. Uh I didn't see any signings there. I don't know if it was farther down, but maybe, I don't know if you put up one sign or maybe there might be an opportunity to put up more than one sign on that property too.
Yeah.
So so it's a little, it's Frank, it's a little league ball field, isn't it?
It's a little league park for Pee-wee age and down, which would be thirteen and down. So, yeah. Yeah, so it's it's pretty easy to pop a softball out of there. And like I said, if they're going over, if they're going over Mr. Haley's house, then they're going over the street and over his house. So a net's not going to stop that.
No.
Yeah, I think, I think some of them are hitting the road, Frank, and going into his property.
Right.
But if you can do that, have a look and and do and do the signage again. Have a look. A couple more signs there. Keep an eye on it. Uh just see, and we can go from there.
Good. Don?
I'm good with that.
I think it's still important to, uh let's be preventative, if uh look into the feasibility of putting a fence. Fence, even though it doesn't step, stop everyone, will stop more than the eighteen or twenty or the fifty that's going in Buddy's yard. Um I think, I think it probably will be in the best interest to say that that we're stopping some. The Phil had a good point about people walking along there, nervous about walking, being hit by a ball. I think uh, I think this would be a good thing for us, to put one up just for preventative.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, Your Worship, that we uh look into the poss, look into fencing of the Southeast ball field and uh put it to Yarmouth Recreation for the viability or feasibility.
So wait a minute now, who's looking into this?
Uh we'll pass it on.
Yeah. Hold it. Steve, Steve wants to say something, but Jeff, that motion.
Yeah, it's it, Yarmouth Recreation uh operates those facilities for us. They develop those facilities. So the matter should be referred to them.
Yeah. So that's what we're doing. Okay, Steve?
Uh just as the former president of our co-ed league, I think what Frank said is bang on. Softball players should not be there. I mean, why are you going to a hundred and twenty feet to launch home runs out? So I, knowing the people in the league and whatnot, I I can write a message to Kelly and and post some things. But I really do think if that, if we uh get that word out, that it will reduce. And I I do agree also with Frank that people, it's easy to sneak in there with no one around. So just some guys probably raring to play and and in there doing stuff. But I I think if the plea goes out, you'll see, you'll see that drop for sure. So any, any uh ball player with any kind of pride wouldn't be doing anything in that field anyhow, so.
Yeah, I I talked to Sean, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. And I can almost guarantee that no one else has been there since I talked to Sean. But I'll I'm I'm going to check into it, get some pricing on some netting because there there could be some other spots that we want to do as well.
Perfect.
Good. So does someone second that motion?
Who made the motion?
Second it.
Okay.
Phil.
Yeah. Question, Your Worship?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Contrary, motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, um Cliff, airport. I can't hear him.
I can't hear or see him.
Neither can I.
I can, I can see Cliff, but I can't hear him. But his microphone's on. Okay, try again, Cliff. Talk again. Oh, crap. Come unplugged?
Jeff, it's, it's me, Jim. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you, Jim.
I was asking Jeff a question. Uh Greg, I see Greg, is Greg Barrow was on the call and left?
He he is still here.
Oh, he's still here. Good. I was hoping he'd say for some of the in-camera.
Uh Lindsay, can you connect with Cliff maybe on his cell phone uh to help him through the audio settings? Looks like he has left the meeting. Just going to try to
Yeah, he'll probably try to come back on. Is he answering, Liz? Oh. I can hear you now, Cliff. Yeah.
Yeah.
Bud, good stuff. Okay, airport chores.
So, uh Your Worship, uh we haven't had the meeting of the airport committee for a significant length of time. And it, I had to move downstairs, so the vacuum's going out in the other room. Anyway, uh we've extended our agreement for about the fourth or fifth time on funding the operations of the airport. I want to make a motion that the council take whatever steps is necessary to call a meeting of the board to deal with the issue of chairmanship and membership of the uh board and any other items that should be dealt with in the near term.
Okay.
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, folks? So that's simply a matter of reaching out to Liz to get that up and going, or?
Well, so Your Worship, as you know, uh you signified that, or the council has decided to accept your retirement from that position on the board. You were the chairman and uh there's nobody to call a meeting. There must be a way to get that done. So the purpose of my motion is to try to get this thing kiss, kick-started. I had a call three weeks or an email three weeks ago from one of the board, one of the uh non-elected board members. And uh with, expressed concern about uh meetings and going forward, so.
So I think Danny, I think Warden Danny was the vice chair. He could call it.
He can call a meeting, so.
To pass the motion, we'll send uh
Yeah.
We'll make a call to Danny.
All right, it'll be done. Okay.
Question.
For the question, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Done.
We'll look after it.
Okay, um additions. That's all the additions, so I need a motion to go in camera, folks.
So moved.
Okay, move.
Whoever.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay.